Good evening. Now would be a great time to silence all of your electronic devices. The agenda for the school board meeting is published and available at least one week prior to the school board meeting. Also, one week prior to the meeting, members of the public have the opportunity to correspond with board members with those communications becoming part of the official record. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on an agenda item will have an opportunity to do so prior to final action being taken. Please fill out speaker request card available in the lobby. During the public comment portion of the meeting, names will be called in the order they are received. Any member of the public wishing to speak on a non-agenda item on a matter relevant to school district will have an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting. Please fill out speaking request card available in the lobby and names will be called in the order they are received. We welcome members of the public to attend our meeting and we respect the public's right to speak to the board. We will not tolerate behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of this meeting, including yelling or speaking over others. Our civility policy is in effect. Our vision statement, "All our students achieve success in college, career, and life." Thought for the day is by myself. This is a quote by Nicholas A. Veroni. I thought it was very appropriate for this meeting since it's the first one we're back in school. Educators are the only people who lose sleep over other people's kids. I can stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to say that all school board members are present. And I would ask for a moment of silence for the family of Zatania Lewis, student at James M. Marlowe Elementary School. Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 2nd and workshop of August 2nd.
Move to approve.
Second.
First Crumley, second Bodwin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Right, that brings me to the question, are there any off agenda items this evening? All right, thank you. And then that brings us to public comment on agenda items only. And we do have one card. It's Fei Fei Ho and it's on 10.3 UNISIC.
Before we get started, this is the opportunity for the public to be heard on items appearing for action on the meeting agenda. Copies of the agenda are available at the entrance to the boardroom. To speak at this time, you must have submitted a green speaking request card located on the tables at the entrance to the boardroom. The form must indicate the specific item or items you wish to address. Speakers wishing to address general matters not on the agenda should complete this pink speaking request card and will have an opportunity to speak later in the meeting. Speakers who wish to speak on both types of topics will have their available time allocated among topics and will have to save time, save non-agenda comments for the appropriate segment of the agenda. If you have any materials you wish to share with the board, please provide them to the board secretary prior to speaking. Each speaker has up to a total of three minutes to address the board. If you see the yellow light on the podium, please wrap your comments up to leave time for other speakers. Speakers will be called to come forward by the chair. Prior to making your remarks, please state your name and address for the record. All speakers and comments are subject to applicable school board bylaws and policies, including those requiring appropriate decorum and civility. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Staff members shall not be expected to answer questions from the audience unless called upon by the board chair or the superintendent.
All right, thank you, go ahead.
Hey, good evening. My name's Still Fei Fei Ho, public address 2223 Washmore Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33607. May comment on some of the things that are kind of tied to my school, of course, 10.3, which is a UNISIC grant. I just wish that every school in our district had that opportunity to get the money for all the important resources. And unfortunately, last week, Mr. Barker got to see over at Ritchie, kind of see some of the positivity. It's unfortunate that, you know, it took us, you know, to get to a very, very low point to get extra money, to get the resources and the people that we need. I know, you know, just about, about a month ago, Mr. Solcheck actually wrote a pretty good article, he didn't pay me for this, but he wrote a very, very good article on how some of our schools are funded. That's in relation to something called the required local effort. And I just wish that we're able to collect enough money so that every single school, not just struggling schools do get that opportunity, that money. Kind of ties into also 10.6, and that's going to be on the turnaround schools. And again, unfortunately, we've got to be the lowest of the low in order to get the resources, to get the people that we need. So hopefully, you know, we let the state legislature know that we do need to correct funding and then instead of getting into some very, very low point. Because we kind of feel, I know the teachers feel it, our parents feel it, also our students. Takes a very, very long time to turn around school. You know, Mr. Barker can also attest to this, it takes a very, very long time, even at Ritchie, even having a renew administration, takes us quite some time to get us into a much better spot. The Gallup numbers are definitely a true testament to that. And again, hopefully, you know, we do get the right resources to support that. If I look at number 11.1, I'm sure you guys will be surprised to see how many people have been resigning or even retiring. So hopefully, you know, with a step in the right direction, not just money from our state, money from, you know, Lift Up Pasco, in conjunction, working together with our union, we can get the money where we need to be. And definitely, you know, make sure our legislators keep them informed. It's a very, very great opportunity that I get to travel to them every year. So thank you to our school district, thank to USCP for allowing me to go up there. We can only do so much in our district. I know there's almost 10,000 employees here, about 60,000 students, so my opportunity last year, got to speak to about 120 representatives, 40 senators, and I feel very proud to, you know, make my students kind of hurt up there without bringing my kids up. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping over a page. United School Board Employees of Pasco, sorry about that, Don.
Good evening. Please excuse my informal attire tonight. I can't get my arm up to tie a tie. I didn't want to wear a clip-on because I didn't want you to confuse me with Mr. Gad, so. Superintendent Browning, Attorney Alfonso, Chair Armstrong, Honorable Board Members and District Staff, good evening, I hope you're all well. Negotiation teams are slated to meet for both instructional and SRP tomorrow. We are very hopeful that we can agree to an economic package that will put recurring dollars in every employee's pocket very soon. There are other considerations being discussed at the table, but right now, the salary conversation is foremost. While the district and the union have differing opinions on the mandated grading practices, the rest of this year's rollout seems to have gone rather smoothly. Perhaps normal has returned, let's hope so. As all of you now know, the referendum on the primary ballot has passed. This is probably the biggest thing to happen to Pasco County Public Education in the last 20 years. I'm extremely pleased, as it was I who some five years ago initiated the conversation of having a secondary source of income for salary improvements. I want to thank the board members and the superintendent for getting this on the ballot. I want to thank the public for supporting this. And I personally want to thank Mike Fasano and John Legg for lending their written support as well. Lift Up Pasco, some of your former educators are also to be commended for all their hard work and communication with the public and helping to educate voters on this cause. FEA and Stephanie Kunkel are also to be applauded as they work to get information out to voters through mailers. There are also others, many staff in this room and watching this meeting, who also had roles in making this ballot initiative a reality. I don't want to start naming names for fear of leaving people off a list, but you know who you are, and I want to thank all of you for your hard work. Congratulations to Megan Harding and Cynthia Armstrong on your reelection to the board. USEP is looking to work with you and all board members in an effort to provide for the best for both students and employees here in Pasco. One goal that I will remain vigilant about is improving employee perception of management and easing the burden on teachers. It's imperative that we allow our instructional personnel to fully concentrate on classroom instruction. We will continue to seek remedies to eliminate unnecessary processes which detract from educating our students. Later in this meeting, you're being asked to name the softball field at Zephyr Hills High School in honor of Craig Milburn. As an athletic director myself, back in 1984 and following, I had the honor of working with Craig. His hard work and concern for his athletes, his school, and the district were at the forefront of all he set out to do. I can think of no finer honor than to name this field for him. We are looking forward to a good year. Thank you in advance for working with us towards that end.
Thank you. School Board Member Committee reports?
You want me to go first?
Yes, please.
Excuse me. The Construction Management Selection Committee went through about 800 pages of material submitted by 10 different firms and narrowed those down to five. And then a couple of weeks ago, we spent all day and interviewed those five and made a selection. So that will be coming to you in a board package soon and will get us moving on our next classroom edition at Starkey K8. That's it, I'm sure.
Very good. Mrs. Crumley?
We had a Community Engagement Task Force Committee meeting, and I'm going to defer my comments to Mrs. Hilton because she has other things to add and rather than being redundant. And then also next month, I believe our next meeting, we're having an update to the board anyways, but I'm going to defer to Mrs. Hilton. I have an E-Hoc, the Health and Wellness Committee, next week. Mrs. Bodwin?
I had no committees meet. I had none.
All right, I had two. The Pasco Education Foundation meeting. The Wise Teacher Supply Drive went very well. I know McDonald's, I saw them pull in with a bunch of stuff that they'd collected. And Publix is coming up in a big way. Instead of just giving the $10 gift cards, they're giving a lump sum of money that they can use to buy the different supplies that are needed. It's huge summer money, so that was very good. And so there had some new board members, five new board members joined, so that was very good. And they're already looking at their fundraisers they're going to be having. I saw the email about Swing for the Kids, their golf tournament is coming up. So lots of good things and wonderful people that are supporting our teachers through that foundation. The other meeting was the Investment Oversight Committee. As if you followed the news, you know, the financial part of it wasn't that great a news, other than when we had the meeting, things were turning around a bit, but we just have to see how that's going to go. But they're doing very good at strategizing where the best place to put our investments are, so we are, you know, still doing, doing fine with that. And I think we are going to be, for the board members, they're going to be reviewing the bylaws. They drag out the old bylaws from when that was created, and we don't exactly do things like that any, the way that was originally set up. So they're going to look at, see if something needs to be tweaked, and that would come back to the, the school board members. So that is it. Superintendent Browning?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members, I wanted to give you an update regarding transportation, where we are in the district. And as you know, the last few years have been pretty tough for the Pasco district. COVID has certainly made the situation even more challenging over the last two and a half years or so. We experienced a significant number of driver vacancies in this district, as have all districts across Florida. Because of this, we were not getting our students to school on time. Because of where we found ourselves, a couple of initiatives were put into place. The first one was adding the fourth belt tier, the second semester of the 21-22 school year. While I will readily admit that this was an extreme step, it did have the hope of getting our students to school on time. As we look back, while it did help, we believe that it could have meant a lot worse. With that said, it did not result in the students, in all students arriving to school on time and arriving home on time. The second initiative we put in place was the elimination of courtesy ridership for secondary schools for this school year, the 22-23 school year. Last spring, we announced that we would eliminate courtesy ridership for secondary students. This too was an extreme step to take, but one that was necessary. One middle high school was actually reported to have had 16 buses, 16 buses of courtesy riders. That's 16 drivers that I could have assigned to routes to ensure our students were getting to school on time. I know I've received emails from parents requesting that empty seats on buses be filled by courtesy riders. I want the board members to know that buses are more full now than ever before. We've eliminated almost 100 routes from the beginning of last year despite the growth that this district's seen. We continue to combine routes this school year to adjust to the numbers of students that we are required to transport, and we do not have enough drivers to get this work done today. At the beginning of the 2021 school year, we had 436 bus routes. Today, we have 333 bus routes. We have grown by approximately 6,000 students in that time. The elimination of courtesy riders for secondary school will remain in effect. We cannot and will not begin making exceptions to this practice because of the inequities that will be caused across our district. While these measures are in place, we are still experiencing late buses. This is due in large part to the 57 driver vacancies that we currently are dealing with. Just last week, and even this week, we had a higher than normal number of callouts, making it even more difficult to get our students to school on time. So why do I say all this? I want the board to know that we are doing everything we can to get the students to school on time that we're required to transport to school. Our transportation staff, and I think it goes without saying, that our transportation staff is working many, many hours addressing the issues of parents and students. We continue to do this to minimize the impacts these decisions are having on families. We'll also continue to be efficient as possible with the resources we currently have. We have seven drivers and six assistants in classes this week that'll be ready for positions after they finish training this week. I'll certainly keep the board updated as we move down this path of transportation. Quite honestly, we were hoping that the four belt tier system was going to be last year and maybe this year, but if things don't change, I would anticipate we'd remain with four belt tiers moving into next year as well. I also want the board to know, moving on to a different subject, that we had appealed some school grades. We had grades that were assigned an I, which is an incomplete based on the percentage of students that tested. Just this afternoon late, I received a letter from Commissioner Diaz. Pasco High School, Chasco Middle School, Gulf High School, and Hudson High School all received C grades. So we did get grades assigned to that, to that school. The only school, the traditional K-12 school, that did not get a grade assigned was Anclode High School. Anclode High School will remain an I because of the percentage of students that tested. So as far as last year's testing, that looks closed on that, and we will work hard at making sure that we get at least 95% of our students tested in, over the coming, over the coming year. Let me also just take a moment to thank our voters and our taxpayers. Last Tuesday was a great day for the Pasco district. It is a game changer, as I've been quoted numerous times. I believe that with the return of our two board members last Tuesday, as well as the approval of the Milage referendum, I believe it sent us a very strong message. Sent a strong message that our parents are happy with the direction that this district is moving. I think they are, they want to support our teachers, and I think most importantly, they want to support our students. This is a, was a huge thing for us because what it's going to do is it's going to put us at, even if not above, our neighbors to the south when it comes to pay. Matter of fact, Mrs. Gant just shared with us today, just anecdotally, that just this week, we have seen an increase in the number of applicants wanting to come into the Pasco system from other districts, more so than we've had. So we know it was, it was a marked difference. So I think it's just the beginning of things to come, and we need to be accountable, we need to be transparent, and we need to do what we said we're going to do with those dollars, and we will do just that. So as I share with you in an email, that we will be putting a plan together and getting that to the board and starting to have discussions on that, what that looks like. We still have a year out before those dollars will be collected. I do want to, in addition to thanking our voters, our taxpayers, I do want to thank USCP for their support and all the staff that worked on their own time and this board for having the courage to place that issue on the ballot. So with that, Madam Chairman, that completes anything for me.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Gad?
Nothing major. I want to make sure that you all have in your calendar the dedication of Kirkland Ranch Academy. I think you all approved the date, and I hope you can all make it. We're getting a lot of positive feedback about that school. It's beautiful, kids love it. I think, I haven't had a chance to read it, but the superintendent pointed out to me, there's an article in Florida Trend about it. If you get a chance to grab the Florida Trend and take a look at it. But couldn't be more proud of that school and the way it's turned out, so hopefully we'll get some really good, positive learning experiences going there, and it'll be a place of learning for years to come. Ms. Armstrong mentioned in October, we have a fundraiser for the foundation, which is the golf tournament, but I also wanted you to get on your calendar, my favorite, which is the Aim for Education fundraiser, which is November 18th. So please come out for that if you can. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. That Kirkland dedication date, you don't have that?
September 21st, 6 o'clock in the evening, PM.
All right, I knew several dates went around, I wasn't sure. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Shibley?
Good evening, board members. I just wanted to echo Mr. Peace's sentiment that we are very close with bargaining and are anticipating a settlement very quickly. All right, it is my hope that we can actually bring the details of that economic settlement to the board at their next meeting on the 12th of September, so that we can begin the process of processing salary increases for our employees. There is also an addendum to item 11.1 that has been uploaded into board docs. I will say, for those of you that have reviewed the entire addendum, there is a positive trend in that addendum, in that the number of appointments far exceeds any other personnel action that is occurring in there. So it does kind of echo some of what we're seeing, that some of these vacancies are beginning to be filled, so that is positive, positive news.
All right, Mrs. Kuhn?
Good evening. A few things this evening. One, I wanted to thank all of the district staff for help with the Transportation Call Center. We did open earlier this year, we opened on Friday, that was the Secondary Orientation Day, and the calls were really interesting this year. We started out with 665 calls, all the way up to 7,000 on the first day of school, and then trickling back down on Friday, the 12th, to 751. So we had a lot of people helping us. I mean, we really had people coming back two and three days, just because of some staffing issues here at the district. We had directors coming to help answer the phone, it was truly a team effort, and appreciate everyone's assistance with that. Also, I shared with you some information about 21st Century Grants that our After-School Enrichment Program got, and have some additional updates for you. I'll just refresh the schools. We have Centennial Elementary, James Marlowe Elementary, Gulf Highlands Elementary, Moon Lake Elementary, Quail Hollow Elementary, Cox Elementary, Centennial Middle, and Stewart Middle. Those are all schools that will be getting a 21st Century program, so that's enrichment programs that will be taking place at those schools. And the process for that, there's a grant review with DOE that's in early September, so we're anticipating, once it goes through all the steps with DOE, some kind of an opening in the, in late fall is what we're aiming for. Both Cox and Quail Hollow are programs that we have had, so we'll be able to reopen those, and we were able to get all of our applications. So it's great news for the schools and for after-schoolership programs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Moore?
Good evening, board members. It's hard to believe, but we are about to start the month of September, but we had a lot of great activities taking place in the month of August, so let me give you just a bit of highlights. On August the 4th, our CTAE team hosted a very successful day of professional development for close to 200 teachers as they began to chart their course, that's our theme this year, Chart Your Course, for themselves and their students. We want to give a big thank you to the Pasco County Sheriff's Office and the Bay Area Manufacturers Association for sponsoring this exciting event. Zephyr Hills High School agricultural teacher, Leanne John, has been accepted into the class of 18 of the Agri-science Education Leadership Program for 2022 and 2023. This is a great opportunity to tour agricultural operations, meet with industry representatives, and gain a better understanding of Florida's natural resources, diverse agricultural landscape, and environmental protections. Ms. John will join other agricultural educators throughout Florida for the Four Exploration and Learning Events in the Panhandle, South Florida, Central Florida, and Tallahassee. And the cohort will graduate during the 2023 Florida FFA State Convention. So Ms. John will engage in leadership development with her fellow leaders, and she'll bring all of that wonderful, great information that she's going to be learning to enhance Pasco's agricultural program, so we want to extend her congratulations. We've also been working to support our new and veterans teachers. We spent the month of August out assisting schools, as well as administrative teams, to help them make sure that they are ready to support our students. We've also enrolled our first integrated education and training students in the HVAC program. first integrated education and training students in the HVAC program at Marchmont Technical College. Now, what makes this so special is these students will be able to complete this program as adult students while earning their GED and their HVAC certification at the same time for free. No cost to the student because of a grant that, and as well as our patient care. So we love programs that are going to, you know, better our community and not cost any money for those students. We also want to say a very special thank you to Senior Supervisor Thomas Broschu, because we had a wonderful adult education graduation ceremony on August the 25th. Ninety-three graduates crossed the stage at River Ridge High School. Twenty-six of those students were from nine high schools. Sixty were GED students, 43 from Pasco Adult Education at Marchmont Technical College, and 17 from Pasco Adult Education at Wesley Chapel. Seven adult high school graduates, and we're always excited. Those are wonderful events. And last but not least, the Pharmacy Technician Program at K-Tech has been certified as a PT CB Recognized Education Training Program. Now, this means that the students will be eligible to take the PT CB exam, which is a national certification exam for pharmacy technicians. So they'll be able to walk out and walk right into a job because they have been prepared for that opportunity. And as always, we are preparing today for tomorrow's workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Hilton.
Hello, good evening. I'm happy to share an update with you about community engagement, and I hope you had a chance to see the email from Mr. Hagerty regarding a new family notification about students' academic progress. So starting tomorrow, we'll send a school messenger email and text to families of secondary students when any grade drops below a C. That'll be weekly. And you may remember that one of the findings from our Community Engagement Assessment indicated that our families did want more academic information about their students. So this is in direct response to that. Additionally, we'll start to communicate about the MyStudent app that you can download and utilize to leverage really easy functionality for this really important platform. And so families can log into the app. They can check grades, attendance, they can complete forms, and they can communicate with teachers. And there's some great functionality for teachers as well. And I'll give you just a preview of what you're going to hear about community engagement in our district update at our next meeting. We'll be doing a little bit of more show and tell. We'll have a demo of a parent landing page with all the info in one place. We can't quite do a MyPasco Connect for families, but we can pull everything together. We've started a community engagement professional learning and feeder patterns with our principals. We're partnering with the PTA Advocates to host a community engagement event later this fall. We'll be launching a new district newsletter for staff, families in our community. We'll launch a community engagement page on our website, and an easy way for families and businesses to engage with us. As and remember, you might have remembered, another finding was about community members, businesses wanting to engage with us and just not knowing how. So we've been directly responding to that finding. And lastly, we hosted the first session of our Citizens Academy redesigned, really communicate, I was going to point out Mr. Hagerty, communications, Ms. Tara Nixon, and some in the first session of our redesigned Citizens Academy. You're going to meet those academy members next month. This month was really about an overview, and they also got to know our success plan with Peggy and Suzanne from the Accountability Research and Measurement team. And that is it for me.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Barker.
Hello. It was a great start to the year, and tonight I just want to take a couple seconds to highlight two schools. Just today, Gulfside Elementary School, Community Partnership School, provided more than 40 boxes of food to members of their local community in need. And I also wanted to mention second graders at Pineview Elementary School, as part of their IB program work, are involved in a service project to help the Sun Coast Animal League, and the kids are really excited about that opportunity to learn how to make a difference in their community.
Thank you. Mrs. Gant? Well, I said Mrs. Gant. Oh, you don't have anything. I'm sorry. All right, Mrs. Parker.
Yes, so I am excited to bring to you a new assistant principal. She was board-approved this summer, but if Ms. Kimberly Wardell could please stand and be recognized. It's not often that I can, thank you. You can stay standing. It's not often that I can share someone's history in this way, but she happened to be a five-year-old in my kindergarten class at Chester Taylor Elementary back in 1997. So yes, I said kindergarten. And so she was hiding behind her mom at registration day, and I had to say, my name's Kimberly too. And she looked around her mom, and the rest is history. So here she is, and she happened to be able to work at Woodland Elementary first as a BCE student, when she was a student, a junior and a senior at Zephyr Hills High School. Then she moved on to be a secretary, and then a kindergarten teacher, a third-grade teacher for a year, and went right back to kindergarten. And now we're super excited to have her as the new AP at Watergrass Elementary School. So we are happy to have here supporting her Principal Andrea Altman, husband Joe Wardell, who is a deputy with the Pasco Sheriff's Office. And I do have to tell you, she was offered the position while she was at her wedding rehearsal, literally at the venue. And so in her wedding, which I happen to be happy to be in attendance at, in her, when she was speaking to her husband at the altar, she brought up her new job and how now he is not only like the husband of a teacher with 18 to 20 kids, but now he has about, what is it, 840? Eight sixty-four. They know the number. So yes, he got a lot of kids right away that day. So it was super sweet to hear that brought into their nuptials. And then she is definitely the proud daughter of Sue and Doug Smith. If you guys would both stand. Sue is a retired food and nutrition cafeteria manager. I know she worked at Pasco and Zephyr Hills High. And then Doug is a mechanic at our southeast garage in Zephyr Hills. So we are definitely excited to welcome that whole family and welcome Kimberly to leadership. I always said that she could run the classroom at age five, so I'm not shocked that here she is in leadership. So congratulations.
All right, congratulations. So, who wants to go next? I'll just say that. All right, Dr. Al.
Yeah, I can't compete with that. Yeah. What I am going to ask is for Dr. Christina Stanley to please come up to the podium. She's going to address 16.1 in your board agenda packet.
Hi, everybody. Hello, Chairwoman Armstrong, Vice Chair Harding, school board members, Superintendent Browning, and district leadership. Thank you for considering this request to name the softball field at Zephyr Hills High School after Craig Milburn. Craig was a teacher at Zephyr Hills High School for 33 years and athletic director for 28. He coached baseball, basketball, softball, weightlifting, and football. He won district championships in all the sports he coached over the years. Many of his former players went on to play college ball and professional ball. He was devoted to our school and our community. He was a great coach and mentor for our students and community. He developed a program called Project Graduation, which had an immediate positive impact in our community to keep our kids safe and off the roads during graduation night. In recognition of his dedication and commitment to the students, staff, and sports program at Zephyr Hills High School and the community of Zephyr Hills, we request that the softball field at Zephyr Hills High be named after Coach Craig Milburn. On behalf of the Zephyr Hills community and Coach Bruce Simarelli, thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you.
I would also like to share a couple things about Anclot High School as well. We had a student there, Raphael Current, that was recognized with the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Outstanding Achievement. It's with the JROTC program. And just so you can understand how stringent and what an honor it is to receive it, there were only 14 selected out of 300,000 applicants. And so we have Sergeant Major Placeris and Major Parrish that oversee that program. And also, at the same time, they recognize the student. They also recognize Ms. Kelly Baker, who is the principal secretary and just does so much for that school. She's a wonderful human being. And on top of that, we had wonderful news at Anclot High School. Principal Moon returned to campus on Wednesday, and she is cancer-free. And yes. And so her faculty and staff all wore pink that day, and they are delighted to have her return. So just wanted to share that.
Right, thank you. All right, Mrs. Hessler Nettles, do you have anything tonight?
Not this evening.
All right, thank you. All right, there's no expulsion recommendations. That brings us to the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to, first, are there any items to be pulled?
Yeah, I want to pull 12.6, but talk about Gallup on there.
12.6, okay. Any other ones to be pulled? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move the approval of the consent agenda with the addendum 11.1 and the exception of 12.6.
Second.
Right, first Altman, second Bowdoin, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings up 12.6, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Harding.
So I just want to have a conversation about this because I'm still not 100% convinced that this is something that we need to be spending money on. I do believe that Gallup does serve an important purpose, but could we form something of our own? I believe it's important that we have a pulse on what our teachers and staff are feeling in regard to engagement and morale. I've spoken to a lot of teachers, to principal staff, and different teachers and staff, and they don't feel that this is very beneficial to the morale and culture of their schools because there's like inconsistency. So some schools might really focus on like the data, but other schools might not. And so, like, so other schools might do it for compliance, and I understand the intent of it, I really do. But even when I was in the classroom, it was just another thing for me to do, and there was never ever follow-up from it. What about utilizing our polling tool that we use to ask questions or have town hall meetings, having raw conversations with our staff and teachers? Shouldn't we poll our teachers and staff more than just one time of year? I know we have thought exchange, quadratics, et cetera, that I think that we can be utilizing. And I don't know if this is a conversation my peers want to talk about, or if I'm the only one, but I just really feel like we could use that money on something else. And it kind of goes back to like community engagement and how I felt before. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if anybody has any other thoughts on it?
Well, I don't think we have thought exchange anymore, do we?
We do want to, I'm sorry, Madam Chairman, we do, but we've, we've reduced the funding for that, and we use it in bigger issues. We don't do it as broadly as we have.
But we have quadratics.
Quadratics, quadratics, sorry. I apologize, I said it wrong. And I know that probably has, I don't know.
I would, Madam Chairman, if I could, we, Mrs. Hilton had sent an email to all the board members detailing this particular agenda item. And I'd like for Mrs. Hilton to go over again how embedded Gallup is. And keep in mind that that teachers spend probably five minutes the entire year answering the teacher survey. So it's not onerous on teachers. So what I, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to have Mrs. Hilton detail again how, how we use, how schools use, how principals use, and our district leaders use the Gallup.
So the full item, out of the full item, only about $125,000 is for the surveys and the scorecards. That's staff and students. The student poll, I believe, is about 25,000. The remainder is for strengths codes, which is a whole nother, it just happens to be the same vendor, and strengths coaching. The strengths coaching is not paid for with GR, it is paid for with grants. Many of the schools use strengths codes with their leadership team. New schools use them at retreats. And so that's a mixed funding source, school-based funds, some department funds, in various, just lots of different ways that we utilize that. People also buy techs, professional techs for adults through this contract as well. In terms of the survey, we have, right now, it's not required to be part of their school improvement plan. We have about 70% of schools who consistently have a focus on engagement and this data in their school improvement plan. It's also embedded in our success plan and in our key priorities. Additionally, it, the strengths coaching, which is different from the survey and the scorecard, is a foundational component of our leadership development program. And so it, from teachers who participate, teachers and other leaders who participate in our lead work, to advancing leader academy, to preparing new principal program, we have strengths work embedded in all of, every, where along the way in the leadership development program. Many of the retreats that we do, when we start up a school, when we have a change in leadership, when we are implementing a new program, bringing on a new initiative, and we pull folks together for mission and vision work to do that startup of a school or an initiative, we rely on strengths work also as the foundation to those engagements with our staff and our leaders.
I was just going to say, so what are we, because you said about 70% of the schools utilize for improvement plans, so are we going to make that mandatory for the rest of the percentage? Because like, the only, and the only reason we're bringing this up is because, like I said, like, my experience and experiences that others people have is that it's been given, and then there's no follow-through with it. So teachers are like, well, what was the point of doing that? And I appreciate your email, I appreciate all your conversations. So I'm just wondering, what is going to be the follow-up in ensuring that this data is being utilized at all the schools, and that the teachers see meaning in that, and that which in turn is going to trickle over to student success, obviously?
As I mentioned to you, we, we did not press hard here in the, during the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, we had many more conversations as part of principal meetings, as part of small group principal meetings, you know, large group principal meetings. And the 70% is right now. I did not go back, I apologize, I did not go back to pre-pandemic to count up how many schools were using Gallup data then, or how many used it as part, or just focused on engagement in their schools. And so when we, the, one thing I think to note is, when we're using that data, we don't often say, I'm, we're responding to the Gallup data. Instead, you might hear, I want to make sure you feel like your voice is heard at work. That's one of the questions. I want to make sure you understand the expectations at this workplace. And so that might be conversations that are had, or what is worked on in a school setting or in a department setting. And so it might not draw the connection like, oh, we're, we're working on this Gallup data, because that's not, it's kind of not supposed to be that way.
So the 30% that aren't, that it's not in their success plan or improvement plan, is it because that school chose not to focus on engagement? Is that what that is?
Or they just might not have put it in their success plan. I think all of our schools focus on engagement. It's one of our key priorities in collaborative culture.
That's what I thought, that's why I was wondering. So then what are they doing to, instead of using Gallup?
Just because it might not be in their success plan, many school leaders will put just the like top one or two things, because it is supposed to be a focused plan. But along the way, all of our school leaders know that culture is critical to making a school run well. I don't know if my peers, I don't want to put anybody on the spot on it, if my peers have anything to add to that.
So our, our principals do use the Gallup data, just like Mrs. Hilton said, particularly when they're in leadership meetings or instructional staff meetings, gathering opinion, feedback. And every one of those principals does have discussion with their supervising assistant superintendent on the engagement of their staff at their school, ways that they can support their staff, because engaged staff stay at the school, and engaged staff engage children. And so we do know how important that is, and it is just a brief survey in time. But I do think all of the principals know how critical it is and how they should be working with their, their staff, and we certainly will continue to bring that forward. and we certainly will continue to bring that forward.
So, you have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to add, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I do appreciate that you brought this up. I think it's important that we have a conversation about it as it demonstrates to the public that we are concerned about spending. So I had a lengthy conversation with Dr. Jones, Peggy Jones, on this topic. And one of the things that I mentioned that I do like about having a third-party survey is that it is third-party because I said, I had kind of thought of the same thing. Why aren't we doing this with all of our technology and things that we have now through our vast computer systems? But I think it's meaningful to our teachers and staff that it comes from a third-party. There's the confidentiality that comes out of it for them. Things, I mean, this is their expertise. There's things that come up through Gallup that we probably don't even think of and that we can share on a national basis with them. And I asked, do they ever provide solutions when an area is identified that we need help in, so to speak? And they, and I was told by Dr. Jones that yes, they do. So I do agree, though, with a lot of things that you brought up. And I think this conversation is a good one to have. And I also mentioned that, that we, as a board, would probably like to see a little more of the follow-up data and how the data is used. And she agreed and that those types of things are going to be addressed. So in my opinion, I think, you know, that's what we can watch for. And at the moment, I'm comfortable with the Gallup staying as is. That's just my opinion. And keep us, you know, maybe a little more informed and updated on things and just show us because there is a lot that we're getting out of it apparently, but maybe we don't see it and we need to know that to justify expenditures like of this. So I do appreciate having that conversation.
And just, I just want to make sure I'm crystal clear on this. Just about $125,000 of that is actually for the Gallup poll. The rest, you said, are for products that we're actually using for leadership training and for... So are those actually tied together or is this different products?
Well, right now, it's all in one contract, but they are different products. I mean, you can, you can make connections between your Gallup, the Gallup staff survey and strengths, but they also can be completely separate as well.
Okay, that was my question. So, you know, it might be some of that, if people really had concerns, it might be some of that you wouldn't want, some of that you would want. We'd be able to break that apart if, in the future, we ever wanted to do that.
Sure.
Okay, all right.
I just want to say a few things because I know I brought it up a few times in prior meetings, but I have spent, I've had some conversations with Dr. Jones on the phone for a long time. And then I also had meetings with Dr. Jones and Ms. Hilton. And I told them, I want you to please convince me that this is worth it. And they gave me a folder of all, I have all the schools that are using the Gallup data in their plans. While I didn't see much change coming about regarding the staff survey and I had gotten similar feedback from teachers saying, "We don't see any change coming from it." There are teachers that say they don't even bother to fill it out anymore because they felt like there wasn't change coming from it. So I reached out, I spoke to several administrators, though, because I don't want to base things off of just one school that I'm getting feedback from. So I spoke to several administrators who said they did find the data helpful in making informed decision about, decisions about staff engagement. And while I personally don't think it's needed because I can tell a school culture by visiting the schools, the leaders at the schools do like having this quantitative measure and they believe they can be intentional in their planning and finding ways to engage their staff using common vocabulary. So like I said, I asked them to convince me, we spent a lot of time on this. I looked at these school improvement plans, which they were highlighted for everyone that was using it. I think the big thing is, and I think this addresses what you're saying too and my concerns, is that we are being intentional with the planning. So that we shouldn't have large groups of teachers at schools telling us that they don't feel that their opinion is valid. So if we had more consistency, I think, the people who are doing it and doing it well are getting something out of it. But if we could be intentional to make sure that all of our teachers' voices are heard. And I think maybe it's a matter of revisiting it with the leaders again because we have had, we've had turnover, we've had different groups that I'm willing to leave it for now based off of looking at all these plans and all the different leaders that I talked to.
Yes, and can you, can we just have more like, so this goes through, can we just have more follow-up? Like, not just the one workshop? Can we just see how these, like, I didn't know about those plans. Like, I would actually like to sit down with you and have that same meeting. So I can see, because I think that's what the disconnect for me is, is like, I appreciate your email and I did understand what you're saying, but I just feel like there wasn't, there's not enough follow-through. So I think if we can, like, in the future, like, that 30%, make sure that that's also being utilized and that teachers' voices are feeling like there's change or being heard and that there's change. Because I did too, I talked to like four administrators, I said they weren't using it. And I talked to some staff members, I said, "Yeah, it's great," you know? So there was just inconsistencies. And then me as an educator, I was like, I don't ever remember ever going back to that. So if that's something that we can do.
And so since that's not the majority of that contract, would you also like more information about the leadership development portion?
Yes, the whole contract in...
Okay, because I do, if you wanted to know more about the leadership development, Leah is here. She could talk to that now or we can follow up later. It is part of our state-approved leadership development plan as well.
No, I think that I'm willing to let it stay for right now, but I just want to see some continuous follow-up. And I would like updates on, you know, what, how this is helping. And also like, are we, just a quick question, we're not just polling teachers and like, schools aren't just polling teachers one time of year for morale and engagement, right? There's going to be multiple conversations that are going to be happening throughout the year because I think it's important, things change. And I know a lot of stuff is out of our control right now, but just so that, like I said, their voices are feeling heard.
We, as part of our key priorities guide and our multi-tiered systems of support work, we do provide some additional survey tools that schools can use related to systems of support. Additionally, some, now I've forgotten everybody talked. Someone mentioned there are specific Gallup resources that we have access to through this contract. We would not have those. And they do relate to specific questions that might be an issue or a group of questions that might be an issue at a school. We already do have a time on an upcoming principal meeting for this, just as an FYI for you. And so we can make sure that we are providing more information, for sure.
All right, so I move to approve consent item. Oh, did you have?
I'm going to try.
We're going to let you talk.
So before I got sick and I was doing school visits, I actually made a point of asking about this to every principal and I missed two of them. One of them, my friend in the back row today, I missed when I visited her school. But the rest of them, all but one told me that they were utilizing it for staff stuff. But ironically, three of them said, "I sure wish that it was done at a different time." And they all said that they wish it was done in March or April instead of in October. So I will throw that out there.
Is that something that we could look at?
I did ask Dr. Jones about that too and I have an answer here because I also got that feedback.
We did the staff at the same time as the student poll was done by Gallup, which was a set window. And we have had some discussions about other timeframes. It is interesting when you get several people in a room and you talk about options and then there's, you don't come up with a better one, is what typically happens. So it would be a reason not for March, I mean, we could do it again.
Maybe in your meeting, have a discussion about that because they all...
That was the feedback I got, too.
Yeah, they all thought that in March or April.
Okay, so I move to approve consent agenda item 12.6.
Second.
Okay, first Harding, second Crumley, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, no problem, good conversation. All right. Right, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is 16.1. And questions to Altman?
I would like to move approval for 16-1 in honor of a man that committed himself to that school and that community and deserves it.
Second.
Okay, first Altman, second Crumley, discussions. I think we're all very pleased to do this, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And thank you for being here, Dr. Stanley, and for the great presentation of this gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to individual board member reports. And Mrs. Crumley?
Oh, we're already there.
Yes, we are.
We are zipping right along. Okay, hang on one second. I don't really have a lot to say tonight except, again, reiterate, welcome back to everyone for the 2223 school year since this is our first meeting. And I hope it is the best one we've had in a long time. And I also want to thank Mrs. Kuhn and your team for responding to all the emails I kept forwarding you on transportation things and your immediate responses usually to the parents. So thank you very much because I know I sent you a lot. Thank you.
Mrs. Bowdoin?
I want to thank the Land O' Lakes High School community for their patience. I know the traffic has been an issue. The school leadership team, the transportation department, and the committee that works with the county are all working on this issue. It was also brought to my attention by parents, there are some student behavior problems on buses, specifically in my district. I spoke with Mrs. Kuhn and she is working with our assistant superintendents to help mitigate these concerns. I ask that parents please speak with your students about the importance of appropriate behavior while riding the bus. It can cause safety concerns in addition to being disrespectful to the drivers and their peers. Superintendent Browning, do you know when we're going to get an update on the supports that are put in place to assist our schools that got below a grade of C? Really quiet in the air conditioning. We're going to discuss that.
We have, during the district update, I believe that we're giving that update.
Okay, I just want to follow up on that, thank you. I participated in another meeting for the five-year review of Land O' Lakes High School's international baccalaureate program. We discussed the teacher support standard and the culture standard. Teachers shared that they have adequate resources, including books, access to online resources, and access to training and professional development. Some teachers missed the face-to-face trainings where they had the opportunity to interact and exchange ideas with IB teachers from around the world. The school is trying to find meeting times for IB teachers to collaborate at the school level. It's a challenge with all the other meetings that the teachers have to attend. Regarding the culture, the school is planning to do more with Gator of the Month in making connections with the IB learner profiles. The students who come to Land O' Lakes High School from the Pineview Elementary and the Pineview Middle School feeder pattern are familiar with the learner profiles and can make those connections, but not all students come from the feeder pattern. So it's good that they're going to start being more inclusive of all the students. I also attended Sunlake High School opening game and the first meeting, football game that was, and the first meeting of the Citizens Academy. Thank you to all the community members who are so giving of their time to participate in this. Met with Date City Rotary and Habitat for Humanity and I shared the contact information for the Habitat for Humanity group with Mr. Gad. I've been communicating with a community member about an animal-assisted literacy program. A parent volunteered to coordinate it and connect with interested schools to the groups that do this. And I sent the contact information to Mrs. Hilton. And this kind of goes back to what you were just talking about earlier. I'm really not sure who the contact is for the community engagement. So I forwarded it to you because I know you've been spearheading this, but like you said, this landing page is going to be really important because when people are reaching out and they want to help, we need to know, and I know Mrs. Armstrong, we've all mentioned it before, who to send them to. So I did send that to Ms. Hilton.
We are working on it, huh?
And I want to ask, I did talk to Mrs. Hilton briefly about this when we were meeting about the Gallup questions that I had. Asked staff to consider some clarifications on the website about the Parents' Bill of Rights because it's titled "The Parents' Bill of Rights", but it also, maybe we could change it to something that better describes the consents that are there because they include forms in addition to those that are added to comply with the Parent Bill of Rights. I spoke to a parent about it and I did share that information. But many of the consents that are there, like we all know, have been available for some time. They were in paper form for many years. The electronic versions are now all in one place to make it easier for parents, which is a really good thing. I'm glad that staff organized it. But I thought maybe we would want to look at changing the title of the page to something so people know it's more than just Parent Bill of Rights. Maybe Parent Bill of Rights and Other Consent Forms or something like that, so it's more clear. That was it for that one. I want to thank our community for supporting the referendum for teacher, bus driver, cafeteria maintenance, instructional assistants, and all non-administrator support staff. Next year, the pay supplements will help us recruit and retain the best teachers for our students. Our students deserve to have high-quality certified teachers in front of them. This referendum, in addition to our commitment to permanent salary increases, will go a long way toward Pasco County Schools employees being the best-paid district in the area. The additional income will be significant for our employees, but I must also say that knowing that the majority of the community supports public education and our educators and staff is a big morale boost to our team. I know that this was a big ask for our community in difficult economic times and I appreciate our voters supporting our schools, so thank you. I also want to express my sincere gratitude to the Lift Up Pasco volunteers and all of our staff who worked outside of their contracted hours to help with this important initiative. This is a big win for Pasco students. Thank you.
Mrs. Harding?
I got an opportunity to visit all of my schools in District 5 the first few days of school. I wanted our teachers and staff to know that I'm there to support them. There were so much smiles and learning going on since day one. A huge shout-out to our teachers and staff who continuously show up every single day for our students. You're so appreciated and I look forward to visiting more schools in the coming weeks. I too just wanted to take a moment to thank our community. On August 2030, you voted yes for our Pasco County students because you believe in public education. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for supporting our teachers and staff through our referendum. I truly believe that this is going to help us retain our teacher staff and recruit new teachers and staff and to help us be competitive to our surrounding counties. Like Ms. Bowdoin mentioned, our students deserve to have certified teachers in front of them teaching them. Our teachers and staff deserve to be compensated appropriately for all their hard work they do every single day. Good schools are created when you have certified teachers teaching our amazing students and when you have good schools, communities thrive. Thank you to the Lift Up Pasco, to all of our staff, to USEP and all of that were a part of that. I also want to give a really big thank you to Ms. Bowdoin. She worked really, 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 really hard on that. So thank you, Ms. Bowdoin, for all your support. Thank you, thank you, thank you to our community from the bottom of my heart. Mr. Browning, I want to thank you for giving that update on busing, but I'm still waiting on occupancy numbers. I know that we have a list somewhere that states who is on each bus and how many students we have on each bus because we give students bus passes. I'd like to know what constitutes a full bus and how many seats are empty. I truly understand that we're in a crisis, I really, really do. And I want to thank Ms. Kuhn for the same thing, emailing her parents back, answering all of my questions. I do have families reaching out to me still daily about their children waiting for an hour at their bus stop because the bus is late and I appreciate you guys looking into all those situations, so thank you. I'm also been getting a lot of emails about the lack of communication about where their children are if a bus is late and I brought that to your house attention, so thank you again for addressing that. But we also have children, again, who are still walking over some, an hour to school in the dark with no sidewalks and no lighting. I have personally written to our BOCC. I don't know if that's something that we would like to do again as a board. I know that the safety team has like a whole list of things. I know that all the things that I've brought up, Mrs. Kuhn has added on that list. But I feel that they're dragging their feet and it's a huge safety issue. So I was wondering if you guys would be willing to write a letter?
I think, I'm happy to show up there, honestly, and speak to you because I made a call to them recently and I'm interrupting you.
No, no, the same thing, I've actually wanted to show up to a meeting as well. So I appreciate, I'm so grateful for their efforts of wanting to put them in the sidewalks. I know that they mentioned that, but we got, we got to move, got to move along. So I'm just wondering if we'd be willing to write a letter stating the urgency of it?
And I think Mrs. Kuhn, or Mr. Gad, you before I have something to say.
I just wanted to let you know that I think in the coming, I can't say it's going to happen overnight, but I think in the coming months, we're going to have some commission members who are going to take up the charge for us on sidewalks. I've had conversations with some people currently... I've had conversations with some people currently on the commission and some that will soon be on the commission. And uh, I think they're sympathetic towards our cause. I think um, Ms. Coon shared with you that prior to Dan Byles leaving, I had talked to him about the sidewalk issue. And he asked us to prioritize the top ten. Not that the others aren't important. Um, but we did send a top ten list over. I think
Okay.
Uh, Ms. Coon CC'd that to you.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm having, I, I, I still think you should write a letter. I'm not discouraging you from writing a letter because I think that's, first of all, your prerogative and also your responsibility as school board members. Um, but I think.
He's also leaving, so we have to make sure it happens.
Yeah, I, I think, well, he's gone. Uh, there's a new guy, Mike Carbala. Uh, he's aware of the situation, but um, I can assure you that a couple of incoming commissioners are well aware of it. And uh, I think are gonna be supportive of our cause.
Well, if my peers are good with that, I'm willing to drop the letter and
That would be great.
I will help you with that.
Okay. Um, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, but I do still want occupancy numbers. I really do. Um, because my belief, if there are empty seats, you talk about equity and you talk about fairness. It's not fair if we have empty seats on a bus and we have kids that are walking an hour in the dark to school. Um, and so I would like some sort of account for how many kids. We make our, our decisions based on data and so I think I have the right to have some of that data. Um, I, I, like I said, I want to thank um, everything transportation is doing to ensure that our students are arriving to school safely. And thank you for addressing any of those concerns, especially with communication with parents. Because I to, truly do know that this is a stressful time and a lot of it is out of our control and we're doing the best that we can, but I would like, I would still like to see some data. And then um, one other thing that I've really been frustrated about is communication. There have been multiple things that have been occurring that I'm finding out last. Um, and I'm sure if I'm finding out last, my peers are probably finding out last. Um, if I'm finding out last, how am I supposed to answer questions, engage with our community, and share the wonderful things that are happening with our school district? Um, it isn't just board members who are being kept in the, a loop. I'm hearing much from our parents and our community and I'm so grateful. I got that email today about um, that portal that's happening with the grades and stuff. So that's, that's a good start. Um, I've mentioned this before, but I really think that we need to get better at this. It's really frustrating when you're finding out from the news what is occurring in our schools. Um, communication is what's going to help squash misinformation and myth truths that are being spread. Um, as well as ease the minds of our teachers who are in the trenches every single day and they're seeing some of this stuff. Um, I'm still getting a lot of calls about the no new tolerance behavior plan for elementary schools. I think that there's not a lot of clear expectations on what that looks like. Um, and when I'm asked that, I, I don't really know what it looks like in elementary. So I'm not sure if that's something we can communicate to our teachers as well. They don't understand what that looks like. Um, and that how, the district has their back. Um, and so I honestly can't blame them for that frustration. So I just wanted to put that out there again. If we could work on that and make sure that board members are in the loop of what's going on, I'd, I'd greatly appreciate it.
All right, all right. Um, first, uh, they've said it all, but I also want to say, I'm so thankful for the community for voting yes for our students and for all the support that we had on that issue. So that was just a, a big win for our district. The, the, the busing, um, you know, I've seen some improvements at some schools as far as the traffic on the courtesy busing. Um, you know, I know it's an issue, especially with the safety and I agree, we need to, to work on getting more of those sidewalks in. And uh, I think a lot of people are not aware that the safety guards, the crossing guards are supplied by the, the dep, the sheriff's department and the city and police. And they're having horrible time finding uh, crossing guards. I've seen flyers in restaurants from the sheriff department uh, looking for, for hiring crossing guards. I've seen deputies uh, acting as crossing guards uh, because they, they are short. Uh, so that's something if we can help the sheriff's department get more crossing guards, that would be a, a, a big help. Because we could put them in more places. Uh, in, in the past, I've asked about empty buses, uh, seats, you know, because when a school bus pulls up, it doesn't look like there's a lot of empty seats. And um, I, I found that there's a lot of parents that say, well, my kid, I can take my kid almost every day, but there's some days I might not be able to take my kid, so I want to reserve a seat on the bus for them. So that seat gets unused except for very few uh, times during the year. Uh, and I know we put out a request when we had the problem with the transportation that if parents would be willing to, to give up that seat. Because they do have a, a right to that seat if they live outside of the two-mile area. And a lot of the parents sign up for it, but then they don't utilize it uh, with their kids because they end up driving them. But I would like to say, I, I'm kind of old school. I remember carpooling to school. You know, there is a, a car full of us kids uh, in the neighborhood that we car pulled and every parent drove once during the week. So that, instead of five cars being on the uh, road, it was only one car being on the road. So I think um, this day and age, I know we used, there used to be a program that would actually try to match up parents. But I would think with the social media that, that uh, we could maybe encourage, try to encourage carpooling uh, again. To see if that might help some of the, the problems that we are having. So that, that might be something else that, that might help. Because it's, this is a community problem and we, we can only do so much as far as hiring the bus drivers. We, we really need the community to come together and help us with these solutions. To, to solve some of these issues. All right, on to good things.
Madam Chair, I forgot something.
Yes.
We learned at dinner that Kathy Hunsinger is leaving and this is your last boarding, board meeting tonight. So I think just as a board, we want to
We're gonna miss you.
Say, yeah, we'll miss you a lot and thank you for
Thank you.
A year, almost a year, right?
Yeah.
She didn't make it a year, did she?
Well, I just, I, I just wanted to
Mr. Gad, I'm just telling you, it was Mr. Gad.
But, 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 but
I don't know who ran you off, but uh, we, we're kidding.
But, but
We just wish you the best in your next endeavor and we just want to acknowledge, thank you so much for all you've done for us and all the support.
Thank you.
And we wish you the best.
Yeah, we, we do wish you the best. Um, I, I had the pleasure of, of going to opening game for Mitchell uh, High School home game. Uh, and there's this gentleman sitting on the sideline, the biggest cheers for the, the football team. I mean, he was a standout as far as cheering for their students. And, and then I got to talking to some of the assistant principals and E S C teachers and said, oh, he's wonderful, he's wonderful. It turns out he is one of our uh, discipline uh, instructional assistants. I won't say IAs because people don't know what all these letters mean. Uh, but he's also a youth pastor and he felt it was his calling to work with our high school kids. And let me tell you, in just the short time that school's been open, what a difference uh, the staff and the assistant principals and principal says that he has made. He's made the connection with the students, the worst offenders. He's made connections with them. He's, he's made connections with their parents. Uh, and he's already turning students around because of these connections that he's making. Personal connections he's making with these kids. So I, I just wanted to give a shout out to, to him for all the one, can, all the change that has come about just from his one efforts. So it's just, it was just amazing to see and it just made you want to smile. And so I'm gonna end that on a good note there and turn it over to
Madam, Madam Chair, if you could, before we go to the turn, I just want to address a couple of points that Mrs. Harding had made. Um, as far as bus occupancy go, I've, I've, I've said this before, we do not have occupancy numbers on our buses.
But how do you know?
We do not. We, what we, what we do have is we have rosters of the kids that are entitled to ride that bus. We do not have bus driver. We, first off, we don't have an automated system that, that scans kids when they come in and records who's actually on the bus.
But the bus driver doesn't know how many are on each bus?
Um, we do not. The bus driver does not keep a running record of the numbers of kids on that bus. That's the reason you have administrators and teachers out at the bus loops getting the right kids on the right buses. And it's the driver's responsibility to get those kids to the appropriate stops. So our system does not track the numbers of kids that actually ride those buses. We have rosters. We have numbers of kids that are rostered.
That are assigned.
That are assigned, uh, to kind of go to Mrs. Armstrong's point, the number of kids that are rostered to be on that bus. I will tell you, with, with the few drivers that I have, um, and, and again, we've gone from four hundred and thirty-six routes down to three hundred and thirty-three routes. We've gone to four bell tears. Uh, we've done away with courtesy riders. Uh, I, I do not want to add something else to the plate of bus drivers that they've, that they've got to count the numbers of kids o, on their buses. Um, so certainly depending on where the bus is in their route, you can probably see a bus. And it may appear that it has bus seats that are open. The problem that is, you don't know where they are in their route because many of those seats are gonna be filled up with kids before they get to school or before they get to their last stop. So bus occupancy numbers are something that we cannot provide at this point. As far as the disciplinary uh, issues in elementary, uh, that is a sticky wicket. And the reason I say that is, is because quite honestly, when you have elementary school students that are committing level-two offenses, uh, quite honestly, and I'll just be candid, there is no place to put level-two or, or elementary kids. You, you, it's, it's not like uh, East Pasco Education Academy or West Pasco Education Academy. Uh, as we affectionately call those alternative schools, where you have a place to put uh, secondary kids, middles and highs. The problem with it is, is that when you have the high number of elementary students that are committing level-two and I will add, level-three offenses, uh, it, it is, there, there is, there's no solution uh, even moving them to an alternative placement. Uh, our Pasco E-school is not set up to handle elementaries. What we found when we were in COVID and we all went to virtual is that was kind of a, a one-and-done system uh, where everybody had to have a virtual platform to be educated on. We do not have that platform. We, we don't support that platform. Uh, but I just want to make sure that, that you, that the board knew uh, that yes, we say level-two, level-twos and one level-one, or level-three offense and you're gonna be placed for expulsion. That primarily uh, applies to secondary kids. I wish we had a place and I will tell you, we continue uh, as a, as a staff to work on uh, the discipline issue and how we address elementary kids. I, I, I will say this until I walk out the door and that is that parents have a, a responsibility uh, to have discussions with their kids about what appropriate behavior is in schools. And we've got to partner with them. They've got to set those expectations at home so that they know when they come into school, what those expectations look like and what they need to do uh, in a civilized society. And that is behave. Keep your hands off of one another. Quit calling each other names. Quit, quit just being kids. Uh, violently, violently being kids. Uh, and that's what I'm talking about. I get the popping and the hitting and the, the pushing and the kicking. I get that. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking where, where you have kids that are literally beating kids to the ground, uh, bloodying them up and causing them to have to go to hospital because of the injuries they've caused. That's the level-twos and level-threes I'm talking about. Uh, and that's inappropriate behavior. So I just, we're still working on the discipline stuff. Uh, I think that we've, we have a plan for the secondary, but it's the elementaries that's, that's, that's harder.
Uh, uh, elementary students, they can or cannot be suspended?
They can be.
They can be. They certainly can be suspended. However, I will, I will tell you, although my stance has been pretty firm, that is, one level-three or two level-twos and we're gonna put you up for expulsion. Keep in mind that between me and, and that principal, there's a hearing officer. Um, and they're gonna look at the facts, they're gonna look at videos, they're gonna make the judgment call and they're gonna make the recommendation to the superintendent. But, but even under that scenario, the last thing I want to do is expel kids from school. Though, it, it doesn't serve kids
I didn't say expel, I said suspension.
You, you can, but that gets you ten days.
Yeah.
That gets you ten days. And I guarantee you, ten days is not enough time to uh, change the behavior of kids. Uh, it just isn't. It, it just isn't. As a matter of fact, I would even go as far as to say that a year of expulsion is not enough time to change the behavior of kids. I think it starts before we get those kids in our system. Moms and dads have got to have conversations with their kids about what appropriate behavior is. The issue is, we end up having kids come into our system. And I'm not talking about a lot of them. I'm talking about a small number of kids, and I've said this publicly, that will disrupt and, and create uh, uh, chaos uh, either in a classroom or across an entire school campus. Uh, and that's the reason I came out pretty strong about the expulsion uh, recommendation for one level-three last year. So we continue to work on that. Uh, is it perfect? No, it's not. Because I don't want to expel kids, but also want to make sure the other twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight kids in the classroom that aren't fighting have an opportunity to get an education. That's what I want. And that's what I think we, as a school district, have the responsibility to ensure. Is that those kids that want to be in school, that want to learn, have that opportunity.
May I make a comment now? So first off, I never once asked for school bus drivers to take attendance. I just think that we need to have some, we have some sort of record of the kids that are on the bus. Because if heaven forbid, emergency happens on our bus, the bus drivers are the ones in charge of those children. So maybe I need the rosters and I want to know what constitutes a full bus. Second, in regards to um, the behavior in elementary, um, I brought forth a situation where a teacher was bit and there's still nothing going on. And I, I've been following up and I know that they're working on it, but those are situations where our teachers feel that they're not being supported. Um, and I have been in classrooms where there's chaos going on, not because of any fault of the teacher, but because there's a few students who aren't making good choices and they are being level-two. And the teacher isn't feeling any of that support. So what I'm asking is, and I don't think this was being communicated right because I think when we had, when you had mentioned the level-twos, I remember Ms. Armstrong and I asking specifically if it relates to elementary schools and you said yes. So I think that the communication to our teachers and to our staff needs to go out and I appreciate the fact that you're looking at that and trying to figure out, you know, solutions for that. But I think that there's like a disconnect there because I think that a lot of our teachers and staff are like, well, what, what, what does that mean? Because there are, there, there, the learning is being impeded by other students. And so we do at some point need to make sure that um, there are consequences um, for that. So I do appreciate the fact that you are continuously looking at that because our elementary school teachers need that support just as much as our secondary teachers.
And I would agree with you, Madam Chairman. I would agree. Uh, the one particular case that you're referring to, I have inserted myself in at Hudson Primary Academy, myself. I have spoken to the principal. Uh, I don't buy the premise that the teacher should not feel supported. Uh, with the superintendent gets involved with something, I think that should send a pretty long, strong message.
I'm not saying her, I'm saying
I understand, but, but I'm not dealing with, I'm dealing with these situations by situations by situations. We have communicated to teachers and, and what I have communicated to teachers is that we continue to work on the discipline issues in this district. They are out of control. Not just in this district, but across the state of Florida and quite honestly, across the United States. And, and all I'm concerned about is trying to keep the ship of the Pasco district afloat. Uh, I want to provide that opportunity for kids that want to be there to be there and get that education. Ms. Harding, you have my word. You have my assurance that we will continue to work on the discipline issues. Uh, not only for the secondary, but the, the slippery piece of that is those elementary kids. Because we do not have an option. If we did, I would, I would tomorrow put each one of those kids that commit those two level-twos in elementary school where we find most of those offenses being created or, or occurring into an alternatively placed setting. Get them out of the school, let mom and dad be responsible for them in that virtual environment. But at this point, I just don't, we just don't have that as a district.
And it's the bus too, the behaviors on the bus.
Oh, absolutely it is.
That our poor drivers are dealing with.
It is. It is. You're absolutely right, Mrs. Bodwin. The buses, the buses, I would say, are, are probably just as treacherous uh, as some of our classrooms based on one or two kids.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm getting hearing from a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Right, um.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything? All right, thank you. Um, then we will call the business portion.